It's Jay. Good morning. Welcome to the Muskogee Creek National Council Regular Session. Today is Saturday, September 30, 2023. My name is Speaker William Lowe. The time is 9:18 a.m. and I call this meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask Reverend David Dunson of Oleka Fellowship United Methodist Church to please come to the podium and say this morning's invocation. Please stand if you will.
Good morning, everyone. Let's go to our Lord in prayer for, once again, he's blessed us with a beautiful day. As I go to mercy, Creator God, we come to you and we just thank you for the blessing of this day. We thank you for all the benefits that you've given to us, dear Lord. You've given us our families, our grounds, our churches. You've given us our nation. And Lord, as we come to you this day, we realize that there are many out in this world that are facing hardships. We see the floods in the Northeast, the looming government shutdown, and how it will affect the lives of many, including our citizens. Lord, we know that you have your hand in all of this. Be with the ones who are mourning, the ones that are less fortunate, marginalized, the ones, dear Lord, that sometimes that we don't always see, but we know that they're there. But be with this body, this group of people, Creek Nation, Lord, because they do so much good for each and every one of us. And we just thank you once again for all that you do for us. In your son Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Madol Reverend David Dunson for those great words. Next item on the agenda, roll call. National Council Secretary Alicia Strobel.
Speaker William Lowe.
Here.
Galen Cloud.
Yalaga.
Mary Crawford.
Yalaga.
Joyce Deere.
Present.
Patrick Freeman.
Here.
Sandra Golden.
Present.
Senator Gouge.
Here.
Nelson Harjo.
Here.
Joseph Hicks. Randall Hicks.
Present.
Robert Huff.
Present.
Anna Marshall.
Present.
Charles McHenry.
Here.
Thomas Enyehola Osborne.
Present.
Daryl Proctor.
Here.
Mark Randolph.
Present.
Joseph Hicks. Speaker, you have 15 present, one absent.
Fifteen present, one absent. That constitutes a quorum. Any business conducted this morning will be valid. At this time, I would like to call Representative Anna Marshall to the podium.
Thank you, Speaker. Good morning, everyone. Today, I just want to mention that we're wearing orange, and I appreciate all those who wore their orange, because September 30th is the National Day of Remembrance in both Canada and the United States. And it's a time for us to reflect on the historic trauma of residential and boarding schools, and how that trauma continues to impact our indigenous communities. So it is a day to remember what the children experienced, how they survived, and how they didn't survive, and how we can move forward together on a path of healing so that no child is forgotten. There are 139 residential schools in Canada, and they started recognizing the National Day of Remembrance in 2013, and it was to honor the victims and survivors. The United States has 317 boarding schools. We're still counting. And they were called, and we have called the churches and the government into accountability for the children that were lost. So we wear orange today because the color is strong. It symbolizes strength, and it recognizes and symbolizes the sun as it sets and as it rises. So as we look today and remember all those who have attended boarding schools, those who have survived, and those of us who are children, of those who went to boarding schools, that we need to recognize and draw attention to the forced assimilation and indoctrination policy of kill the Indian and save the man. Another date to remember is October the 6th, when General Richard Pratt opened a boarding school in Carlisle, Pennsylvania, and began removing our First Nations children. So today, the time for healing our intergenerational trauma is today in its now. And then also today, we also want to recognize the people of Tennessee, because they are going on their commemorative Trail of Tears Walk that they've done for 20, this is their 21st year of doing that. And so they are gathered today at Blights Landing at the historic Cherokee Removal Park to remember those of our ancestors who arrived there in chains, who were hungry, but they came with a band of Cherokees, and they were left there, and then they, and of course, they made their way here. But we just want to remember the group there that does that walk each and every year, and it's always the last Saturday in September. So let our thoughts and prayers be with them today as they do their commemorative walk, and let us find a time today to reflect on all those who, the victims and the survivors of the boarding schools and residential schools. Thank you.
Madol Representative Marshall. At this time, I would like to recognize Principal Chief David Hill and Second Chief Dale Beaver. Madol for being here, men. We greatly appreciate you chiefs. Onto approval of minutes. We have minutes from emergency session, August 7, 2023; planning session, August 22, 2023; emergency session, August 24, 2023; and pre-agenda regular session, August 26, 2023.
Speaker.
Yes, Representative Marshall.
I make a motion that we approve the aforementioned minutes with any necessary changes.
Representative Anna Marshall makes a motion to approve all the minutes I just read, seconded by Representative Nelson Harjo Senior. Discussion. Do we have any discussion, representatives? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Enyehola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Senator Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks. Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. All aforementioned minutes are approved. Onto the order of business. TR-23-094, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to apply for federal funding through the Bureau of Indian Affairs Tribal Transportation Bridge Program to fund 10 replacement bridges and six bridge constructions within the Muskogee Creek Nation. The sponsor is Representative Joseph Hicks.
Take your motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-094 is adopted. TR-23-095, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the adoption of the 2023-2024 Conservation Regulations of the Muskogee Creek Nation. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud. Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Daryl Proctor. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-095 is adopted. TR-23-099, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing certain Muskogee Creek citizens the use of the Great Seal of the Muskogee Creek Nation while participating in the Indian National Finals Rodeo. Sponsor, Representative Joseph Hicks.
Take your motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mark Randolph. Discussion. Do we have any discussion, representatives? Hearing no discussion, voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-099 is adopted. TR-23-100, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the construction of a new Head Start, early Head Start facility for the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Education. Sponsor, Representative William Lowe. Second Speaker Robert Huff makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomas Enyehola Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-100 is adopted. Next item on the agenda, NCA-23-075, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing an appropriation to the Muskogee Creek Nation Tribal Construction Services in order to create the grant assistance program. Sponsors are Representative Charles McHenry and Second Speaker Robert Huff.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Charles McHenry makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Second Speaker Robert Huff. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Enyehola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Senator Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. NCA-23-075 is adopted. NCA-23-097, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing an appropriation to the Muskogee Creek Nation Facilities Department for water services provided for the Muskogee Creek Nation Industrial Park located in Oak Mogy, Oklahoma. Sponsor, Representative Joseph Hicks.
Take your motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mark Randolph. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Enyehola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Senator Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. NCA-23-097 is adopted. Next item on the agenda, NCA-23-098, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the United States Department of Agricultural for the benefit of the Division of Agricultural and Natural Resources. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud. Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Daryl Proctor. Discussion. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Senator Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Enyehola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. NCA-23-098 is adopted. NCA-23-099, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending MCN-CA title 23 entitled Wildlife Code. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud. Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Daryl Proctor. Discussion. Have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Senator Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Enyehola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. NCA-23-099 is adopted. NCA-23-100, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing an appropriation to the Office of Environmental Services for the lagoon closure at Duck Creek and Okeema Casinos. Sponsor, Representative Joseph Hicks.
Take your motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mark Randolph. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? No discussion, representatives? Roll call vote, please.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Enyehola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Senator Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. NCA-23-100 is adopted. NCA-23-103, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the Department of Health and Human Services, Indian Health Service, IHS, produced Prescription Pilot Program Grant. Sponsor, Representative Mary Crawford.
Sponsor motion to adopt.
Representative Mary Crawford makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joyce Deere. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Senator Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Enyehola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. NCA-23-103 is adopted. NCA-23-104, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the Institute of Museum and Library Services for the benefit of the College of the Muskogee Nation. Sponsor, Representative Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Anna Marshall makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomas Enyehola Osborne. Discussion. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Enyehola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Senator Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks. Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. NCA-23-104 is adopted. NCA-23-108, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of the 2023 in bridge fueling futures grant for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Light Horse Police Department. Sponsor, Representative Randall Hicks.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Randall Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Charles McHenry. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Enyehola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Senator Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. NCA-23-108 is adopted. NCA-23-109, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds received from the United States Department of Treasury for the fiscal relief funding for Muskogee International LLC. Sponsor, Representative Sandra Golden.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Sandra Golden makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Senator Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Enyehola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. Matt, do you have some of your board members in the audience, or if y'all would stand up, please, and just be recognized, we greatly appreciate you all being here. Madol. Outstanding. Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. Just wanted to give you all and just say thank you. Next item on the agenda, NCA-23-110, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds received from the United States Department of the Treasury for the fiscal relief funding for the Muskogee Nation Businesses LLC. Sponsor, Representative Sandra Golden.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Sandra Golden makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Senator Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Enyehola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. NCA-23-110 is adopted. Vivian McCutcheon, can you and your board please stand and be recognized? We just want to say thank you all for being here. Greatly appreciate you. Madol. Next item on the agenda, NCA-23-111, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds received from the United States Department of the Treasury for the fiscal year relief funding for the Light Horse Police Department. Sponsor, Representative Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Mark Randolph makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Randall Hicks. Discussion. Is there any discussion? Representative Golden.
Yes, thank you, Speaker. I noticed that Zachariah Harjo is on by Zoom, and I just have one question, and that is, how did you work with the Light Horse Commission to make sure this is in order with their strategic planning? Mr. Harjo.
Zachariah, can you hear us, sir?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Now we can.
Great. I am actually on the way in. I had a family matter this morning, but the request came from the actual White Horse Police Chief, and there was a meeting between me and his officers, talking about strategic planning and some of the immediate needs that we could resolve, both through self-governance funding and funding available through the American Rescue Plan Act allocation that the nation received. And to that extent, the commission when we met at that time was non-functional, in my understanding, given that they didn't have enough commissioned officers, not officers, but board members, or I guess, people in the commission to have a quorum. And so for those reasons, the list of needs came from Richard Phillips, or Chief Richard Phillips, and his deputy chief officers, as opposed to the commission. So if you have further questions, they might be able to provide more information about how they derive the actual request for the needs. The actual need itself is related to the transport of prisoners to and from courts, as well as to and from the institutions where they're housed for the duration of their court periods, or if they are given sentences. So that's basically the request and the need for this expenditure of ARPA funds.
Thank you. The reason that I asked the question is because there was an earlier question in regard to the ARPA funds running out, and how are you going to sustain this after that? And so I thought maybe you could answer with that. Thank you.
Zachariah, did you hear that question, sir? How would you sustain this program after the ARPA funds are expended?
Yeah, so the nation is in receipt of increasing self-governance funds from both White Horse Police and court services, which is record, and a number of other services besides that. So I anticipate that our self-governance funding will increase to help absorb some of these costs. But the other reality is that we're going to continue to need additional investments from council for the foreseeable future, as well as additional facilities at a federal legislative level to ensure that the tribe continues to receive advanced appropriations related to enhanced services that we're required to now provide because of the COVID. So all of those will play a hand, but I do believe that there will be funding mechanisms to absorb at least the staffing costs associated with the transport program and division within White Horse and the courts moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Harjo, Representative Golden. Is there any other questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Senator Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.